I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item is the minutes from the previous meeting, which is March 17th, 2014. Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Any additions or corrections? Yes, Mr. Madigan.
Well, I, just to remind everybody, I was connected via phone for this meeting. And the minutes reflect apparently a technical difficulty with that connection under new business. I don't know that I'm necessarily, that it would be in order to ask for a change to the unapproved minutes, but I do want the record to reflect if a change is not appropriate since I wasn't here in person, that had I been here, and what I was trying to do over the phone on new business agenda item number three was to vote aye, on new business agenda item four was to vote aye, and on new business agenda item five was to vote nay.
Okay, could we hear his responses?
No. I called the roll and I called his name and there was no response.
Right, and what I'm just suggesting is, okay, I'm not asking to vote now if that's out of order. What I'm just doing for this recorded session is to indicate what my intent was and what I tried to do over the phone line, so.
Okay, well, we didn't hear you and the minutes is reflecting what it was that we actually heard.
I understand that, and that's why under this recorded session, I'm now saying what my intent would have been.
Okay. You probably wouldn't have changed the outcome, but you're just trying to get the record straight. Okay. All right. So, do we have a motions? Yeah, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Any other additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to petitions and communications. I have a number of people that want to speak. Kane Kaiser is first.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. My name's Kane Kaiser. Address is 1711 Dobbins Drive in Champaign. Just like to thank all you for adding the digital billboards to the amended agenda for tonight for discussion. Adams Outdoor is looking forward to working with you guys and having a further discussion. We'd also like to reiterate that we do have business, much business support behind us on this with over 40 letters and petitions in support of this, and we look forward to coming together on a mutual agreement. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Daryl Cruz.
Is this right for the issue that you're going to bring on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Daryl Cruz. I live at 2007 South George Huff, and I hope to speak to you tonight with a little levity as compared to some past meetings. And three weeks ago, the city council decided to defer a vote on the nominees from the mayor regarding their placement on a traffic stop data task force to provide an opportunity for feedback from the community to kind of assess what the feeling might be in the community. At this point in time, I'm kind of disappointed in the fact that I have no more information three weeks later than I did then. I haven't been able to get the names of the other nominees or copies of the applications or even the number, how many people might have applied for this particular committee. So, when you look at this vote tonight, my question is, is I wonder what information you have and whether the communities had a fair opportunity to be able to assess and provide you with the adequate input and feedback that you might need to make a decision. And I'd like to make a possible suggestion for improving the process and also to comment a little bit about what I see are a couple of the problems with this particular issue. First of all, I made a copy of the application form, and I'm sure you're all familiar with it, and after an applicant, and this is for boards, committees, commissions, and all those things people can apply for. And after you put your information down, the very first question is, is how long have you lived in the city of Urbana? And it has the city of Urbana on it. And that's the very first question when you apply for a board or commission is, how long have you lived in the city of Urbana? I was able to get a couple of the copies of the applications of those that the mayor has nominated, and I noticed on that question, some of them said it's not applicable. They put N/A. And I was kind of puzzled, who told it was not applicable, whether you resided here or not? And my question is, if that question isn't relevant for this committee versus any other board or commission the city council uses, why do you even have it on there? As a first point. Probably the biggest concern I have is the fact that the committee, as it's being recommended, the composition, it still doesn't consist of a simple majority of people from Urbana. And I think that's extremely important. And I'm going to use a quote from Sergeant Charles. When I read his application, I don't know if you've read the applications and seen what some of them had to say, but Sergeant Charles says, "I view this as an opportunity to improve communication between the police and the community." That was one of the best responses I read out of all the applicants. And I'm sitting and thinking, golly, he wants to meet with the community. And I'm looking and I'm thinking to myself, where is the community on this task force? Where are representatives from the local community organizations? Where are representatives from the community at large outside of City Hall or the Police Department? Where are those people? How is that opportunity to improve communication supposed to occur when Urbana residents and organizations are not included? The dynamic of this task force, the ability of it to do its work constructively, to engage in a dialogue with the Police Department and the community at large, to me seems like it's absolutely critical that members of the ACLU, the Ministerial Alliance, NAACP who lives here, the League of Women Voters, other individuals be part of that discussion. Otherwise, how do you carry that discussion from a perspective of people that live and work here in the future and the outcome of that work being accepted? It appears from people I've talked to that there's a purposeful intention to simply marginalize that group, to exclude that group, those groups of people, because they've raised the issue. And I can assure you, there are people vitally interested in this issue that are willing to work on this issue.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Sorry, one minute is hard. I'll have to talk really, really fast. Just to give you an example, one of the candidates is a graduate student, a doctoral student. He lives in Champaign, and I was reading his application, and he said that his time this year is working as an editorial assistant on political behavior. I kind of laughed, and I said, maybe he should be studying the political behavior of Urbana city politics rather than being a statistician. It's kind of interesting, knowing that there is a professor emeritus in math and statistics that lives in Urbana for decades who's retired, that applied and who's interested in this topic. And I'm thinking, you know, I can't use that person's name, I can't get it, but I know there's an individual who lives here, who has the ability, who is interested in the topic, and I'm just asking, why is this particular graduate student involved and not this other person?
I'd move for two more minutes.
Second.
Lastly, I would like to, this is just an example, and it's very hard to talk about because I can't, you can't get access to the other information. The one thing I wanted to, though, ask the city council to do for a future reference in applications is the fact that when I asked for a copy of the applications, I was given a response that that would not be possible because of the fact that it was clearly would be a possible invasion of personal privacy unless disclosure is consented to in writing by the individuals. And so, I asked, well, could we have the names of the individuals to see if they disclosed? No, I can't get any of the names. They haven't disclosed that they would agree to. It's like a catch-22. And my impression was, when you fill the application out, everybody knew that if they were selected, it would be made public because you have made it public. But the fact now the public has asked to see the other applications, they're saying, no, we can't do that because they never agreed to disclose it. And I would be concerned as a city council, if somebody filled an application for a commission or a committee or board and didn't know, yes, that's going to be made public because it may be needed in the future. So, I would like to ask you, on the application form, on the bottom in the back, from henceforth, to prevent this kind of strict-to this way of avoiding making things public, to simply put this note, "By completing this application, you consent to disclose this information to the public if it's requested," which I assume everybody expects it to be done when they complete it. So that, you know, when we want to look and see and weigh, you know, the decisions that are being made, we can do it intelligently. I feel a little concerned that I can't speak to you intelligently anymore now than I could three weeks ago because I don't have any more information other than to tell you that I believe there should always be a majority of Urbana representatives on committees, that I believe there are people in Urbana who are qualified to do this, and that there ought to be a way for the public to have access to this information. And as city council members, you have to understand, I think that's your responsibility to the citizens of Urbana as a whole, to ensure that community representation is part of these committees. Thank you.
Patrick Patterson?
Good evening, Mayor Pressing and members of the council. I'll be very concise in my remarks. My name is Patrick Patterson. My wife and I are longtime residents of the city of Urbana. We are property owners as well. We've raised three children here. We understand that the council will be taking up for further discussion the issue of removal of parking and the insertion of bike lanes on the stretch of South Broadway Avenue between Lincoln Square and the high school. I'm here tonight to highlight once again to the council that the vast majority of residents and property owners on this stretch of Broadway Avenue oppose the, oppose the removal of street parking to add bike lanes. Doing so will cause safety issues to residents in the evening and significant inconveniences to residents during each day, during the school year, that is. The current parking capacity, I was informed of from Bill Gray, on this stretch of Broadway is 54 cars. We've made numerous car counts on the street at different times of the day. These car counts typically rise well into the 40s during the school day, have counted as high as 47 or 48 cars during the school day, and into the 30s in the evening. Not necessarily every evening, but various evenings, we have made these counts. We will be back on May 12th and will urge respectfully that the council make Broadway into a bike route as opposed to inserting bike lanes and removing the parking. We believe that using bike route signs can achieve the necessary objectives while also being very respectful to the needs of the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron Ammons?
Good evening, council. Aaron Ammons, 1108 North Bucie. I am also here to address tonight the appointment, the task force commission. And to be as succinct as possible, I will reiterate just first, one of my concerns that I had from last week about the appointment of what I believe to be one of, if not the most qualified person who lives in Urbana, who has been studying this issue for the last nine years. And I just find it perplexing that we would make a committee and not appoint the most qualified person to the committee. I don't see how we could convince our citizens that we are serious about achieving a particular set of results. We wouldn't do that with any other commission or committee. We would not appoint someone, we would not overlook someone who we knew to be one of, if not the most qualified person in the city. I just can't see anybody making such a decision. So, it brings to question, it brings to bear some questions that I think the citizens should understand or should ask. The other thing we want to know, or I would like to know is, I'd like to point out is the lack of transparency in this process that Mr. Cruz just spoke to, and this is, I believe, on the behalf of the mayor and the city as a whole, that denying access to the names and the qualifications of the other citizens who applied, it limits the council's ability to make educated and informative recommendations to the mayor. So, if there were other people amongst these other applicants who you thought were more qualified and you would like to push forward to the mayor, you don't have access to that information. And she did say that she would share that information publicly, and we still have not seen that information. So, I think that that's one thing that the citizens would be concerned about. From what I understand, I've spoken to a couple people who have, one who has been appointed to this council, to this task force, and said that they were actively recruited by the mayor to serve on this task force. Now, I don't know, but why this concerted effort to find other people when several qualified and interested citizens of Urbana have expressed interest without prodding or recruitment? Why would you go and seek out other individuals living in Champaign who have showed no interest at all in this to appoint them to the task force above and before other individuals such as Daryl Cruz and other folks who were interested in serving? So, I think that's questionable. And I was talking to some youth the other day, some young men who are within the ages of 20 and 29, one of the cohorts that have been stopped the most, African-American, and he said, is there, are we represented? The individuals who have been directly impacted the most, is there a young male who has been stopped several times by the police on this task force between the age of 20 and 29 so that we can represent our perspective as well? And I think if you're going to have two police officers on there expressing their perspective, then certainly you would want the representation or the perspective of the individuals who are directly impacted by this disparity. I think that makes plenty of sense. And it brings a level of balance and equity to the, to the task force. So, I'm urging you all to, to table this again or to defer this once again. And I know that there's another appointment available. There are only 10 people who have actually been appointed, or the mayor has suggested at this particular point, so there is another opening. I am advocating, again, I would not be able to sleep at night well if I didn't advocate for the best person who I think was most qualified to serve on this commission. So, I would like to urge once again for the mayor, for you to appoint Daryl Cruz to this commission, to this task force. Thank you very much.
Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood do not wish to speak, but they are, for the record, concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Martell? Yes, did you want to speak?
Not on that issue, but I, I was going to have a packed house, have another issue. So, since we don't, I would like to say one day on the issue of the task force.
Well, go ahead.
I would like to, Evelyn, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. I'd just like to concur with Mr. Cruz and Mr. Ammons that I believe that we should have more information. I was at the last city council meeting when the mayor agreed that information would be forthcoming with the applicants, the people who applied, that that information would be given to the public and especially to the council members. And I have not seen that information. That's why I think we deferred, the council deferred voting on it, and I haven't seen any information. And I think we should have that information because I know some people that I've talked to that applied and they were interested and they did not get chosen, and they were very qualified. But I think any of those people, well, I can't say any, the ones I talked to would love to see Mr. Cruz because they know how well qualified he is to be on that committee. Everybody knows that, that I've spoken with. And I would love to see him on that committee, Mr. Daryl Cruz. And I would just like to say that. Additionally, I would, I was, well, no, I think that's enough for me to say at this time. Thank you.
Martell Miller?
Martell Miller, 1112 Illinois Street, High Council. I got, I was going to speak on one thing, but I'm going to speak on two. I'm going to speak on the sewer issue in Ellis Drive, and I would like for the people to sit up here, as commissioners of the city, to go to Ellis Drive and look how many houses didn't have sewer work. I went doing canvassing there and it really opened my eyes. It's like every fourth house over there didn't have some recent sewer work where you didn't see they didn't dig and they didn't put in a clean trap over there. Now, I don't think there's no other place in Urbana that's going through what they're going through in their sewer work. So, I'm telling the council members, take a walk through there and look at the houses that's going through the sewer work over there. And now, I'm going on the racial task force issue. I don't understand why y'all couldn't, the mayor did not pick Daryl Cruz. It's got to be something personal, the work that he has put into the racial profiling, which I know within the last six years with me, that we didn't talk to Todd Rint, we didn't talk to the chief of police, we didn't been in front of everybody that will have some kind of stake in dealing with the racial profiling, and he don't get appointed. We need to deal with some transparency of the mayor's office on giving out information that we should have, who applied for. You were elected official, so I think it ought to be nice of you, since we were voted to elect you, to get the information that the community needs. It shouldn't be put on the council to look at you. You ought to do that just out of position that you carry for the community. I'm just going to leave it like that. Thank you.
Patricia Avery?
Good evening, the mayor, council. Well, I'm here to speak about the traffic stop data task force and not to complain or to challenge the mayor on her appointments because I happen to be one of those appointees, and I appreciate that. The NAACP was one of the petitioning agencies, so we do certainly appreciate the mayor appointing me, and I have no problem serving with any of these other selected appointees. But I would like to say something, just as some background to the council, that in July of 2013, so we're coming up pretty much a year just in terms of when I was contacted by Daryl Cruz to speak before the NAACP regarding, regarding this issue. He had just received the 2012 release of the traffic stop study, and he had been contacting a number of organizations, and the NAACP was one, to ask if he could come in to our next meeting and present some information to our executive board. We agreed to do that because it was something that we have been interested in, and we have been watching and paying close attention to this issue. And it has been disturbing that the reports have come back with the disparity among the African-American drivers. So, of course, it was interesting to us, but he also raised another issue when he contacted us. He said, you know, what really was I raising for me was that now we are able to collect, the I dot study is collecting dog sniff, sniff data. And 100%, what the report reflected was 100%, the canine had alerted like 100% of the time, and only when, when actually looking for the contraband, there were only 17% that was coming back with the contraband. Mr. Cruz has been, for me, the most consistent, you would think, as being an African-American and one of the, the groups that have been, this traffic study has been disparate against, to have Mr. Cruz being a white man who has been very consistent and very thorough in this being a very important issue to him, I find very, I just, I just think it's admirable for him to care so much about this issue, not being one of the class of people that this, this, this racial profiling is happening, what the disparity is happening against. So, he has done a lot of community education in terms of getting this information to organizations such as mine. So, I was a little surprised to say, when I, when he did not appear as one of the appointees on this committee. I would be advocating, if there is one spot left, and I understand there is, that we need someone like Daryl Cruz. I think that he would bring a lot to this, this task force. I know he's certainly brought a lot to the community in raising the awareness about this issue. And it just seems that we would be missing a lot of knowledge on that committee, somebody who's put the work in. He's, he's put the time in. He cares about this issue. And we, when we want people that are experts, that have gone out and done the work, when we are setting that and creating these committees, I've made a lot of appointments in my day, and he would be certainly somebody that if I were still in a position where I was making appointments, that I could not overlook.
You have one minute.
I'll be done. I could not, I would not be overlooking someone who is as highly qualified as Daryl Cruz. So, I would just say, thank you for my appointment. I, I, you know, I would have liked to have seen some people from maybe ACLU and the Ministry of Alliance as well on the committee, but I certainly think overlooking Daryl Cruz, who actually has been a big advocate and a big fighter and a big person who has been really out here beating the streets with this issue, would be, it would be an injustice to our committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Byron Clark?
Good evening, mayor and city council. Hadn't planned to really speak to this issue, but after.
Would you state, please state your name and address?
I'm sorry, I'm Byron Clark. I live at 1607 Harbor Point in Champaign.
Thank you.
Thank you. It, I also think that it's deeply concerning that one of the experts related to this subject has been overlooked in the process. And I think it goes to the heart of the integrity of the whole task force if, especially in light that he's dedicated a lot of his time to develop this expertise, that he will be left out. As someone who has a lot of friends and family members who are directly impacted by racial profiling, I'd like to see the people with the most information, the people who are more passionate about the issue, to be included on the task force. So, I just want to go on record to say that it's disappointing, and we expect you all as city officials. city officials to do the very best job when you consider who you want to investigate and to research these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? The Reverend Melinda Carr.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Pressing. I just wanted to, I wasn't gonna really say anything, but I couldn't go home and not say anything. I can go home and sleep and not say anything, since the Ministry Alliance, and I'll say my address is 211 West Tremont Street, Champaign, Illinois, about the Urbana Traffic Data Task Force, since our name was in the paper of the Daily Alina. And I didn't have the resolution, I wanted to kind of refer to that, but I don't have the current one. But I just wanted to refer to what was in the Daily Alina in the December 11, 2013 edition. Said their proposal, which wasn't, I don't know if this is the one that was actually accepted, but it said at least two members will have education and expertise in statistics. One council member may serve on the task force. Five members shall be appointed from nominations supplied by the community organizations that petitioned for the creation of a task force. And in the list, the organizations, Urbana, Champaign-Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice, the local NAACP chapter, the local ACLU chapter, the Ministry Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity, and the League of Women Voters, with one representative from each. Other members shall be chosen based upon their knowledge and understanding of sociology, law enforcement, or other relevant experience. And I know this is, this wasn't the final, but I'm just reading this because there was some issue with this proposal and the language. But I do want to say and mention that, yes, Darrell Cruz was the one who came to our organization and spoke to, he did a presentation, and we would not probably even have been a part of it because we would not have known about all the things that have, have been happening in the community and why it was even brought to the forefront. And so if I had submitted my name and I had been chosen, I would have stepped aside and said, no, I would like him to be representative, a representative on that task force. I would have stepped aside because I know his heart is toward working in the community and his issue is very important to him because he went to all, all the organizations to bring it forward. So I really do have an issue, I have a problem with that. But I just wanted to come forward and say, if there is a, an opening for someone, that he would seriously be considered for that role, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a communication from the U of I Employees Credit Union. They wanted to take a moment to thank your team at the City of Urbana for their hard work during this hardest winter of recent memory. Over the course of the winter, our employees have spoken frequently about how city employees were out plowing and patching potholes at a record pace during record snow. Our organization prides itself on high-quality, consistent customer service, so having witnesses your team's hard work, we wanted just to say thank you and remind you that we appreciate the extra time and energy the city and its employees put into our safety and comfort. So that was very nice. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have the appointments to the Urbana Traffic Stop Data Task Force. And as I promised, I've sent you the applications of the people that I'm recommending. And I also have Eric Jacobson's here, but he didn't, that wasn't sent out to you. And I guess there was a mistake on Sinjin G. Chatab, Chetapadhe. But I think all these people are very highly qualified and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Yes, Carol.
I do want to make a, just a correction. The request actually that went forward when this item was deferred was for the council to receive all of the applicants. The reason why the request was for the council to receive all of the applicants is because the council cannot make additional recommendations without knowing who all of the applicants are. Otherwise, there's no purpose for the council to, in reality, approve the list because we're not really participating, we're just, in, in the words of, I think, Mr. Jacobson said, we're not exactly gonna rubber stamp the appointments. But in this current process, we actually would be rubber stamping the appointments because we actually don't have anyone to select other than what was put forward to the council. I appreciate all of those members of the community who may have completed applications and also really appreciate those who may have responded to the mayor directly, being willing to serve. I am also concerned and would make, at this point, a request of the council to, and I'm gonna make an official recommendation, that Darrell Cruz be added since there is an open spot. He is a member of the Urbana community and he has worked on this issue for the last nine years. I'm gonna request that the council approve the addition of Mr. Darrell Cruz to the committee at this time. And that is my motion, and then I'll speak to the second part of my request. So I'm making an official motion to add Darrell Cruz to the list.
There doesn't seem to be a second. And I would point out that the appointments, the appointments are, okay, there's a second now, but that motion is out of order because the appointments are made by the mayor and the council can either vote them up or down. But I don't think there's a provision for the council to substitute somebody's name. And I, and I have talked with council members, so I don't think the motion is in order.
So if I can follow and be recognized to follow that.
Yes.
As I see that there's actually no process, then I'll speak to the, the reason why I have to withhold my vote on the task force. The process itself has not been transparent. The board, the selection process, all of the applicants should be provided to the council for every board and commission so that we can weigh in on either the persons that we think are most applicable to a commissioner board and ask the mayor for serious consideration. Because this has not happened, it makes it difficult for me to support the task force in its current recommendation. Although many people on the task force I personally know and respect, the information should be provided to the council as it was requested and it was not lending to the lack of transparency in this process. The other part of the problem here is that if a person is denied participation in his own government based on no other reason other than the organizations who brought this forward were the ones who made the original request and then denied participation, I think that raises questions about the appointment process as a whole. So for those reasons, I, I will not be supporting the recommendations as put forward this evening. Thank you.
Bill.
Yeah, I'd also like to respectfully ask the mayor to reconsider the appointment of Darrell Cruz, since there is an extra opening. If, if she would be willing to do that tonight, I think we'd have a great team of 11 people that, there would be a very credible outcome from their work. Darrell's been passionate about these issues for a long time. I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily call him an expert. I've disagreed with him occasionally on this, but I think his passion is definitely there. He's done more work than anyone else in the community in bringing, bringing it to light. And I guess in keeping with his spirit of levity, I would say there, there are two ACLU members on this task force. I won't out them, but.
I have an ACLU member.
So there is some representation there, but I also understand the concern that someone wouldn't be appointed because of something they said during the meeting, because of a position they held, because of a preformed opinion or something. I think we need diversity of opinion as much as we need diversity in race on this task force. So I would, I would hope that she reconsidered her so that we could approve 11 members tonight.
Dennis.
Yes, I guess I'd have to say that I'm very curious about what other names might have been submitted, but we don't see them here. It's, they've come to the mayor's office and we haven't seen any of the information except for the applications and some of the VITI information and resumes of those people who have been selected. And, and for the most part, they seem to be qualified individuals, although I do see that there's a preponderance of people that, you know, are not from the Urbana area, they're from Champaign or the Champaign County. I'd say that, that, you know, I'd prefer to see more people from Urbana on the task force, although it's not necessarily, I guess it's not absolutely necessary because I think that insight and understanding can come from the wider community. If we have people who are especially interested in this process, who have come forward and have made the application, I don't think that we're required to limit it to people who are from Urbana. But there is the possibility, which I'll put forth to the, to the committee, is that we can divide the vote, we can divide the issue, we can, we can vote up or down individuals rather than a list of people. And we may be able to, by that process, fill at least half or two-thirds of the commission. And if we don't approve of all the individuals, the mayor has an opportunity to bring more names forward. So I would make a motion that we divide the, divide the issue and we approve of each individual by individual vote.
I would like to say that not being on the committee doesn't mean the person can't participate because these are gonna be public meetings and anybody who's interested will be able to participate. There doesn't seem to be a second to that motion, so is there a motion for the appointments?
Some moved.
Second. Okay, motion by Charlie, seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? Yes, Eric.
I'd just like to make one point about transparency because I don't know of any appointment to government positions, boards, or commissions where the names and information about the identities of applicants who are not chosen are made public. That, that's just never done, to my knowledge. So on the other, so I would not, on the other hand, if there were a checkbox on the form where a person who is applying could opt to make their application public, I mean, I would definitely would not support what, what Darrell said where people had to agree to make their, their information public. But perhaps it would be okay for people to have a chance to, to opt for that. And, and perhaps that would, you know, help with the transparency process. But, but, but absolutely, you, you just can't, or, or, it's never done. I can't, I'm not gonna say you can't do it, but it's really never done to, to public, to make public information about people who are, who are not chosen for positions like this.
The City of Urbana has never done that before and I did talk with a number of council members who thought it was a bad idea. Because we're not trying to criticize people, we're just trying to come up with a group that can work together. And I think that this group, it is, it will be five people from Urbana and five people from Champaign and one person from Sydney, I believe. But he's on the, he's on our police force. So I think there was a feeling that the reason that they're asking Urbana to do this, Urbana has already studied this once. People who were pushing for this said that they really wanted Champaign to get involved in this. So that's one of the reasons I said I would be happy to appoint people from Champaign. And I don't think that when you look at people driving on the streets of Urbana, that it's unreasonable to have people from Champaign on the committee. So it would end up with five from Urbana and five from Champaign. Champaign is twice as big as Urbana and one person from Sydney. So. Okay, any other discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I didn't really agree with was the appointment of two individuals from our police force who have police force background. I, I did make the motion that, that there'd be a representative from the police force on the commission, but I guess I'm a little bit surprised that there are two, since the police force has, well, it seems like it's got a pretty strong representation from the groups that have come forward to inquire about it. And it would seem like one individual from the force would be totally adequate to cover that topic.
Mike Beely is the former police chief, so he's not on the force now, but I think he is the leading expert on the iDOT statistics. He's worked with them since the very beginning. And so I, I think it's a well-balanced group and I hope you'll support them. Michael?
Just a quick question, mayor. You indicated, well, there are 10 names on the, on the agenda, but you had indicated five, five and one, so when will the 11th name be submitted?
Well, this, I will try to do it at your next council meeting. This individual had a, a family problem, so was unable to apply. But I think that you will, if she does apply, that you'll find that she's highly qualified.
Okay. Is there any reason to move forward with the list of 10? We don't have the 11?
This was sent to this, it was sent to this council meeting and I think we should move on with this. I've spent an awful lot of time on this and we have the budget to do. So I would just as soon not have to argue about every single person and why everyone who I didn't appoint was not appointed. I think that's really excessive and it's gonna make it hard for us to get people to apply for things if we're gonna.
Sure, I'm not trying to argue about this at all, I was just wondering, can the?
It's on the agenda and I think it was deferred and I think we should act on it.
I was just wondering if anything can happen with the, with the task force without it being fully appointed? Is it, would they go ahead and meet with 10?
I don't think that they're gonna meet in the next two weeks, but I wasn't planning to have them meet in the next two weeks. I was gonna wait till we get the 11th person.
Okay, thanks.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
No.
Okay, I think the ayes have it, if that's correct. If I'm wrong, let me know. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole.
Okay, that was led by myself last, last time we met. So we have five items on the agenda. Ordinance number 2014-03-031 and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year 2013 to 14 concerning Urbana's pilot program. And for the committee, I would move approval.
Okay, there's a motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Okay, the next item is ordinance number 2014-03-032 and ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 14-7 of the Urbana City Code regarding to the schedule of fees, and this has to do with Urbana license fee. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Madigan.
This might be the one and only time you'll ever hear me potentially advocate for a higher fee.
Let's mark that down in the history book.
So, yeah, just, just record this little bite of tape right here. But I think part of the, in all seriousness, part of the pilot program ought to be, you know, as a business owner, if I have the city saying I'm gonna throw a $20,000 improvement right out in front of your building and I'm only gonna charge you $250 so you can make more money, I'd be very happy about that. So I think part of the pilot program ought to be also a discussion about what a, what the fee ought to be and there might need to be, well, there just might need to be consideration of an adjustment of that to reflect the value to the adjacent businesses.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, I, I would hope that as part of the evaluation, we figure out what the, what, what the proper income to the city for doing this, maintaining it and all that. Because over the lifespan of the Urbana, it should essentially pay for itself in some way. So.
Well, I totally agree. And I think starting off with a very reasonable fee is good because this may or may not work. So I'm totally fine with a small fee, but I think that ought to be considered.
Just remember you're on a slippery slope.
We live on a slippery slope.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. This is an ordinance. We need a roll call vote on this. Oh, I'm sorry. Duh. Put me down as duh there. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Dennis?
Okay. Second, the next item is ordinance number 2014-03-033. An ordinance approving the easement on certain real estate. This is a portion of the real estate parcel with permanent index number 41-15-30-400-007. Located in Champaign County, Illinois, Tag Warehouse, LCC. For the committee, I move approval.
So moved.
Oh, second? You want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Robert, seconded by Madigan?
That's fine.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, next is ordinance number 2014-03-034. An ordinance amending Schedule E of section 23 dash 73 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring obedience to no-turn signs. Main Street at Race Street, Main Street at Broadway Avenue, Race Street at Main Street and Broadway Avenue at Main Street. Did you get all that? For the, and this is actually to change the, the street signs to allow right-hand turns at certain locations. For the committee, I move approval.
Second. Okay, motion by Robert, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Bill Brown?
Yeah, um, yeah, I asked about pedestrian traffic last time and I, I got an answer that, I should have printed out. But basically, the state rules are that if there's so many accidents within some, such a period of time, you're supposed to look at putting in no-turn on road signs. So then, of course, you have to wonder why are they there to begin with? Were there that many accidents? Did they have to do with the pedestrian traffic there? So I'm a little reluctant to support it. I understand that the configuration of the interchange has changed and that you only have one lane there now, so you aren't likely to have somebody pull up to your left, which would reduce your visibility to the left. So you have better visibility, but it doesn't seem like there was a lot of consideration given the current pedestrian traffic there. And then with the bicycle lanes, it's always going to be interesting because people still don't get the fact that when you're turning right, you're supposed to merge into the bicycle lane before you turn right. So I think people are going to be making right turns in front of bicycles all the time. So if the, if the typical response for motorists is to make a right turn in front of the bicyclist waiting there, but half the time the bicyclists don't wait there either. So the result is going to be the bicyclist is going to try to go through the light because he looks both ways and nobody's coming and the person on his left is going to turn right in front of him. So I think there's going to be conflicts there. So I don't, I, I, I understand that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee aren't traffic experts. They're more an advocacy group. But I don't think they were ever consulted on this. I wish, I would have, I would appreciate hearing if they had any input on it. But I'm not an expert in traffic issues either, so I'm, I'm going to go with the recommendation of the traffic engineer. But I'm, it's reluctant and I kind of wish we'd had more input on it.
Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah. It, it seems to me like it's an acceptable thing to try. But I imagine that if we find that there are conflicts that are arising, we may install, reinstall some of them. And I think that would be the thing to watch for, to see what, what comes of this decision. But because the alignment of the lanes and the reduction of lanes has occurred, it's certainly a lot easier to see what's coming and to look around. And the bike lanes are very well marked. So, yeah, we all have to be aware and become more knowledgeable about our environment before we make actions with these large, you know, several-ton vehicles.
Do you want to say something else?
Yeah, just on the positive side, I did want to mention that when we had the stop signs there, I did get a lot of people saying they liked the stop signs. And that's kind of the same thing. You get to turn right at stops. So I think people will appreciate that and it probably would improve some, improve the flow. I'm just a little worried about safety.
Eric?
You know, I, I'm not an expert on, you know, statistical expert on bicycle and traffic, bicycle and pedestrian traffic. But just from my experience as a cyclist and a pedestrian, I feel that there are more conflicts when people do right turns on green than when they do right turns on, on red. Because if it's a right, because if I'm going through, you know, if I'm going across the street, whether I'm a pedestrian or whether I'm on my bicycle, I'm going to stop at the red. And so the, the, and so if the car turns then, on the other hand, when the car is turning on green, then we really do have a conflict because the car is, it's okay for the car to make a right turn, but it's also okay for me to go straight ahead and we're, you know, colliding. So I, I think from the safety point of view, it just feels to me as though this is actually, you know, for bicycles and pedestrians, actually an improvement.
Charlie?
One of the things that we struggle with from a bicycle education point of view for people driving vehicles is the issue of moving, if you're making a right turn, to move into the right, be it a bicycle lane, to pull into a driveway or, or, you know, when that dotted line is there, pull in if you're going to turn right. And if the line is solid, that's really, as I understand it, advisory. And you can pull in and turn right, but you should always, when you're pulling to the right, you know, check to make sure that you're not over, over, that you're not passing a bicyclist and then pulling right in front of them and cutting them off. That's, that's the danger that happens at, at, at lights that are green. As a bicyclist coming, a car is coming, and exactly the conflict that, that Eric's talking about here. It's, it's a difficult concept to get across, but we need to continue with the vehicle education. And both vehicle driver education and bicyclists. And bicyclists, the best thing they can do is when they see a car that's going to, with its turn signal on, is not get up next to it, but stay behind it, even if it doesn't pull to the right. And, and that way, you know, or you get into the lane of traffic itself, move out of the bicycle lane. What I do when I'm going straight out of a turn, I, I don't stay in the bike lane. I actually move to the center of the road and, and let people who want to turn right, turn right behind me. So they can get, you know, a lot of times there's enough space to let cars move to the right when they need to. Especially when there's a sort of a right turn apron involved. Then there always is enough space to, to let them turn right behind you. So, so there's, there's ways a bicyclist can, can stay safe, there's ways cars can be safer. And it's going to take a little bit of education to get that to happen.
Anyone else? All those in favor? I'm sorry, mistake. Roll call, please. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Dennis?
Finally, we have ordinance number 2014-03-035. An ordinance amending Schedule J of section 23 dash 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. Main Street between Weber Street and Lynn Street. And for the committee, I will move approval.
Motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, lastly, we have a resolution, number 2014-03-019R. Resolution for the improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. 2014 MFT resurfacing project. And for the commission, I will, yeah, I will move approval.
Motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. I believe this involves money, so why don't we have a roll call?
Well, I think there's going to maybe be some discussion.
Oh, you want some discussion? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Craig, if you could come up.
Oh, sorry about that. I did read your email. It just dawned on me.
That's all right.
Okay.
I tried to warn you.
All right.
Here, just a second. I'm not being able to pull this down. Yeah, of course. It's not going to open now. Craig, I appreciate you coming up. I'd emailed you earlier saying that I was just going to ask a couple of questions. Is somebody from the finance department here tonight?
No.
Okay. I just also want to say as an aside that I find that troubling, that meeting after meeting, we don't have a comptroller here or someone who can answer questions of a financial nature.
You can ask me.
Okay. Very good.
I can also, I've ran some numbers too, Michael, so I can give you some insight from my end.
Well, hang on a second. I, I'm going to find this thing. I found it. Okay, I appreciate the information you sent to me and what I'd asked Craig for and he timely responded was breakout of the various costs of the, of the road resurfacing projects that are slated for this year. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we have this Windsor Road problem and it's a major problem. And we also have these resurfacing projects which, which tally over half of what the city's going to have to come up with for the Windsor Road project, at a minimum. We're assuming state funds. I don't know if we have an obligation from the state on that at this point. I don't think so, not that I've heard anyway. So let's assume basically scenario, we have a $3 million challenge with Windsor Road. I'm looking at the surface condition ratings here of these various projects. And by my calculation, if we took everything off the table and deferred it for a year, that would leave the Bucy Avenue project and we would be only dealing with, only dealing with surface conditions of a three or a four. Okay? That could defer $1,230,000 of, of revenue that would be expended on this resurfacing that, in my mind, we could potentially put toward Windsor Avenue. Okay? Windsor Road. So I guess my question is, what is the trade-off there? And can we quantify that trade-off? In other words, we're going to have to continue to maintain these roads if we don't resurface them. Do we know what that cost might be for a year, for a typical year for these projects? I mean, I'm making, making you pull something out of a hat probably, but.
Well, here's the thing. We have been deferring road projects for years because we, we don't have the money to keep up. The projects that are on this list were, are part of the capital improvement plan, which was approved almost a year ago. And when we start work, you know, we started a year ago and we're working towards that and we're getting to that point today. I can't readily quantify the cost of deferral. But what I can tell you is the condition of the streets are, when, when Michael refers to a three, they're either three, which is poor, or a four or five, which is fair. And I have pictures. If, if council wants to see them, I'm sure you've driven the streets, but they're not in good shape. So what happens is when you defer, and it, we could defer. I mean, it's, it's your choice. But when you defer, you're riding basically a line. And that line is, it's a risky line, meaning that instead of resetting that road, you could defer it and it could go worse. So that's where we're, where we're at.
So by worse, do you mean that if we don't resurface the road, maybe we're talking about incurring more expense to rehab foundation or replace foundation?
Yeah, it could be that. Also, keep in mind, we have a, a list of streets that are beyond what, what you see here. So when we defer, we defer the next year on something else. And at some point, we don't catch up and we have to reconstruct. So that's, that's the risk that we have in that. So when, when you ask for a quantify, I can't readily do that because I can't see into the future. If I, if I could, you know, I would do that, but I just, I can't do that.
I get that, but I guess, you know, because you're, you are talking about how we defer on a regular basis, obviously that we have experience with that and we deal with that on an ongoing basis. Doing this would not be something that hasn't been done and managed with expert, managed expertly by you and, and the folks with the city on an ongoing basis. My issue is we don't have a Windsor Road every year. Okay? So I'm not, like I said in my email to you, I'm not trying to tell you your job. I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but we have to make a financial decision. And so what I'm trying to figure out is it, does it make more sense to defer and pay cash for Windsor Road to the tune of over a third of, or, let me put it this way, reduce what we have to borrow by maybe a third? Or is the cost of borrowing the money and going ahead and re, and resurfacing these roads less in the long run? So I guess that's the financial question that I have, is how much is the bond issue going to cost to carry? And I think that all needs to be discussed within the context of this.
I, I'd like to, to say two things about that. I think we can get pretty good interest rates. And what we are facing is very strange weather conditions, like this winter. And if you defer maintenance, it's going to be more expensive than it would have been five years ago.
Well, I appreciate your opinion on that, but I'd like to see.
Well, I'm just saying, you can see from what happened this winter. And if this happens again, we're, it's not like it was five years ago.
I'm well aware that the freezing thaw cycle was probably worse this year than it has been in, you know, most of my lifetime.
Yeah, well, there seems to be a trend worldwide. So, you know, we're going to get worse winters, I think, and maybe tougher summers. So it's going to be harder on our streets than it has been in the past.
So my question for Mr. Henshaw, had he been here tonight, is what is, what is the estimation from the finance department of what it's going to cost to borrow that $3 million? And over what term are we looking to borrow it?
We'll, we'll have to think about whether it's going to be 10 years or 15 years. But we've gotten pretty good interest rates. And I think the cost of the interest is probably going to be less than what you'd be risking on deferring the maintenance. That's my rough estimate. Bill? Okay, go ahead.
I can jump in real quick. We've, we've ran some numbers from what Rich has given us. As the mayor indicated, I mean, it could be a 10 or 15-year bond, but we're looking at probably somewhere less than 2%. So, and then we also, I should let you know, we have a new updated cost from our consultant. The plans are still in the preliminary stage, but the cost has dropped from $6 million down to $5 million for this project, for the Windsor Road project.
What do you attribute that to?
The cost drop is basically, when the initial cost was put together, it was basically just a ballpark number. Now they're getting into design, refining the various components and are able to come up with a better cost at this time. And roughly about $5 million, the percent share on the state side would be 50%, so that's two and a half. So we'd have two and a half million. So just running some numbers here, if you ran a 10-year bond at 2%, that's $280,000 a year for a 10-year period.
I think Bill Brown was next. Thank you.
So if we, if we can get 2%, 2% on the bonds, do you have an estimate of what inflation is as far as just if we had to do exactly the same thing on the road next year as we did this year?
Well, you know, I mean, one rule of thumb we usually use is somewhere around 3.5%, you know, annually, but again, you're riding the line, meaning that if everything is perfect, it's two and a half, if it fails, it's three times the cost.
And is there a expected lifetime, life cycle of this resurfacing project? Is it 20 years, or...?
Well, we've been getting, on average, one rule of thumb is 12 years on a resurfacing. Now, we're doing different preservation treatments now to extend that life, but that's one rule of thumb, it's 12 years.
And then, Olive Race Street is in a TIF district. What, what rules do we use as far as figuring out whether we're gonna fund a road project from the TIF funds, or from the motor fuel tons, funds?
It, it's been my understanding that resurfacing projects are not, have not been traditionally candidates for TIF money. I think that's been more, I guess I take that back, some of, some of downtown did fall within the TIF district. But mostly, if we have the funds within the state motor fuel tax or local motor fuel tax, we'd rather use those than pull TIF money. And so the, the budget is, is, is here at this time, you know, we have the Windsor Road issue there. I, I guess one key point is, even with the furl, we can't pay cash for Windsor. There's just not enough money to do that. We still have to borrow to get this thing to move forward.
Yeah, I was just talking about reducing the amount that we're borrowing.
You know, one possibility is, at this point, and, and again, I can show you pictures, but, you know, and I redrove the streets again and looked at them, and be honest with you, just for my professional recommendation, is to go forward with this project, but we could discuss, you know, with this upcoming plan, which begins, you know, the Capital Improvement Plan, July 1. I mean, I think these are the hard, fast things that could be discussed as far as deferral of maybe perhaps next year's program. That could be on the table, I think. I guess the point is, when we start these things, this was a year ago, and actually, we, we had some pavement evaluations by a consultant a year before that, and, you know, we get concerned with streets like Washington, where it, maybe there's not potholes, but if you look at the surface of it, it's, it's disintegrating. I mean, there's like a brick layer underneath there, most of these, some of these streets have a brick layer. That's what I get real concerned about, because you see, like, up there at Broadway, near the pool, that's another project that I'd look forward to rebuild that next year, and it's, it's beginning to fail. We had one of those at McCullough Street a couple of years ago, where it just disintegrated on us, and we had to go into emergency mode and redo that. So that's just one, one comment.
Okay, Bill Brown, did you, oh, you're done? Okay, Eric Jacobson?
So it seems to me we could start to put some numbers on this. So if, if we assume that we're gonna get 2%, 2% for the bonds, on approximately $1 million, that'll be about $20,000 a year that we'll incur in additional interest by not, by not deferring the maintenance. Now, the question is, how does that $20,000 compare to the costs of the advanced deterioration of the roads? How much closer does that move us towards actually something deteriorating to the point where we have to actually move from resurfacing to rebuilding? And I guess the other question is, what's the wear and tear on the, you know, additional wear and tear on the cars that are going over that road compared to the $20,000 cost of the borrowing? So, I don't know how to, I, I, I'm still, you know, far from being able to precisely quantify, but I think that the, I think, I think that most of my constituents would say, don't put it off to save $20,000 a year, for this year, in, in, in financing costs, that, that in terms of the general good, in terms of having better roads, in terms of not moving those roads a year closer to the necessity of actually needing to be rebuilt, that I think it's, it's probably a reasonable trade-off.
Okay, anyone else?
Just have one question.
Carol?
So the, whatever you have to bond and the interest you have to pay back, did we figure out where that was coming from to pay it back?
We're still in the process, that would be, come forth in the new Capital Improvement Plan. There are options there, we could come out of the, the general fund, it could come out of local motor fuel tax funds. Right now, we don't, we haven't defined exactly, so...
And the approval of this resolution tonight allows you to move forward to identify specifically where this is coming from, or...?
The approval tonight is, is a resolution to appropriate or allow the use of mo, state motor fuel tax monies for a part of the, of the project. The local motor fuel tax is already approved with the previous Capital Improvement Plan. So this just, we have two streets, Race and Iowa, that we're pooling our money together with, and that's what this is about. It's just to, to get the state motor fuel tax resolution, which allows us to go to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call? Whoops, sorry, Diane?
Just to clarify, the approval for Broadway Avenue is for the, the resurfacing, and anything related to parking removal would come in a separate discussion at council.
Yeah, tentatively scheduled for the 12th.
For May 12th.
Of May 12th, committee the whole, yes.
And is, can I ask one other? The, if we borrow two and a half million, is there any chance of getting any of that through a state capital bill at some point?
You know, we're gonna shop, definitely, this project to the, to the state, but we've already got, you know, some commitment on their end, and they've been very helpful, but, you know, boy...
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No, it doesn't hurt to ask.
So there's a possibility...
Right, and we're actually gonna shop, we have three or four other projects that we're, you know, we're looking at here, too.
Okay, there was a motion by Dennis, who, who seconded this one?
Charlie.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dennis. Reports of special committees?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna take this opportunity as a special committee, which is the Urbana Sister Cities Committee, to make a little bit of a report. I wanted to pull together a PowerPoint program to show you, but I don't really have it ready yet, of the, the group of people from Urbana who participated in the Washington DC US-China Conference that was supported by Sister Cities International. We had six people from our community who went and participated in that program, which included a visit to the Chinese Embassy, a reception at the Embassy to meet and to discuss Sister Cities programs and friendship there. A week, a day-long, a series of meetings concerning Sister Cities programming in the nation, and communication between different kinds of, levels of government and communities in, working on Sister City projects. And then at the end, there was a special session at which some of our representatives spoke about the experiences they had, the success, and overview of the Sino-African Initiative Grant that we just recently completed. And we were, Urbana, you have to realize, is one of three cities that were chosen nationally to participate in that program. And we completed a project for improving sanitation, waste collection, and organic composting in our sister city of Zomba, Malawi, with the participation of a Chinese sister city, Haizhou District in Guangzhou City, China. So this was a cutting-edge, new experiment that was conducted by, under the grant, and at the end, our, our, our group was, was one of the three people who completed it and reported upon it. And then we had the opportunity to visit the Malawi Embassy in Washington DC and do other kinds of discussions, which I think I'll bring to you pictures of that experience the next, maybe the next meeting. So I just wanna report on that first, and secondly, also related to the Sister Cities Program. This year, Urbana's hosting the annual conference. We're gonna have about 65 delegates come from around the United, around the state of Illinois to our town. They're gonna be staying at the Urbana Landmark Hotel this coming weekend, the 12th and the 13th of April. And there is a list of the programs available online at Eventbrite.com under 2014 ISCA Conference. You can see what the conference program is like. If you wish, you can participate. There are different levels of participation. So it may not appeal to all of you in the community, but I did wanna mention that, you know, on Saturday night at the hotel, we are gonna have a Malawi Mixer dance party, and I have a poster here that I'm gonna hold up. You may have seen some of these already posted downtown, both in Champaign and Urbana. $10 at the door, you can party and dance to Wonangi Kattunda's band, which is gonna play popular African music. It's rhythmic and exciting to dance to. We're gonna be dancing for an hour and a half to two hours, and in the wonderful environment of the great hall at the Urbana Landmark Hotel. So I invite you to think about it, to come down if you want. You can walk in at the door, pay $10, and have a lot of fun. That's Saturday night at 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Reports of officers? Or did you wanna say something?
Well, you know, since you're talking about Saturday night, Dennis, there, there's a reason why I can't come to the Malawi Mixer, because I'm gonna go to the McKinley, you know, social, uh, Justice Awards. And one of the awards that Naomi and I are really, really proud of, although we didn't do it, is Tasha Thompson for the Goals Project, because Tasha was a foster child in our home for a number of years, and we kept up with her. So, so we're just so tickled, and so I'm just gonna say that I'm really, we're really proud of that.
But I do hope that Naomi will come, because she is on the program to make welcoming remarks at 7 o'clock.
Well, she's gotten pretty good at being in multiple places at the same time, so I imagine she's gonna cope with that just fine.
Okay, Diane?
I wanted to share some good news. If you remember, a few weeks ago, I shared news about the National League of Cities highlighting the video that was, music video that was made in our community garden on Lehman Avenue. And at the time, I had mentioned, we, we had hoped that the video would be forwarded to the White House and shared with Mrs. Obama's office, and it was, and we received a message from the White House. And unfortunately, they don't use US Mail anymore, everything is email. So I'm going to read, it's a brief message, but I wanted to read it and share it tonight. It says, "Dear Diane, we are thrilled to learn of your community's dedication to helping Urbana lead healthier lifestyles through coordinating Let's Move Urbana. We want to thank you for sharing your Let's Move in the Garden music video, illustrating the great success of your community garden. We're truly inspired by the commitment and hard work that each and every member of your community is putting into contributing to combating childhood obesity. Please forward a special thanks to Lizzie Duckworth Carter, Ketrian Doris, Precious Doris, Lenasia Carter, and Lametrious Carter for their contribution to the music video and promoting healthy habits in the Urbana community. Everyone has a role to play, and working together, we can move to raise a healthier generation of kids. We value the important work being done across our communities and wish you all continued success with your efforts. Signed, Best Regards, Meredith, Office of the First Lady, the White House."
That's nice. Very good. Reports of officers? Brandon Boyes?
Hello, I'm here to go over the highlights of the Economic Development Activities Report for the month of March. As you can see, there's, continues to be a lot happening in downtown Urbana. We have issued a request for qualifications for the 200 block of South Vine Street. We are requesting qualified commercial realtors to submit their applications by May 5, and we'll hopefully make a decision within a month. Champagne Cycle is open on Race Street, Champagne Cycle in Urbana, and they'll be having their ribbon cutting this Wednesday at 10 a.m. Dancing Dog Eatery and Juicery, the new vegan restaurant going in at 126 West Main, has submitted their plans to the Building Safety Division for the build-out of the new kitchen. So those kinds of projects can take a while, this is a new kitchen going in to another downtown building, so it's exciting to see this kind of investment, and we're looking forward to that business being open. We were pleased to learn in community development that we have a video game developer in County Plaza, Luke Schneider of Radiant Games, is an independent developer, a former employee of Volition Games, and just released, or he developed, pretty much by himself, a game licensed by the Cartoon Network called Powerpuff Girls, or based on the cartoon. So, yeah, nationally released video game was, was developed in County Plaza by a developer who's been in that building for, for some time. So it's exciting to see more creative industry activity happening that we didn't even really try to stir up, so congratulations to Luke. We also had a wonderful pop-up shop that's been occurring in downtown Urbana for the last three weekends. I don't know if you've seen the line going around the block at the corner of Main and Race, but Pandemonium Donuts, they're really good, I think I went three times. Did anyone else happen to try it out? While their pop-up shop is, is complete now in Urbana, they're gonna move over to Champaign and do a pop-up in downtown Champaign, and their ultimate goal is to do a food truck, and I believe that they'll have a presence at the farmer's market as well. So it's good to see another startup here in our community. Uh, over at Gregory Place, excuse me, I've mistitled this. First of all, Wendy's is under construction, if you didn't notice, so, I know that sign's been up for a long time, but it really is coming. And at Gregory Place, Co-Fusion's new casual restaurant is open, they were on the front page of the Business Section of the Sunday Paper. And Cafe Bene will be having their ribbon cutting on Friday at 4 p.m. So lots of new activity in Gregory Place as well. Just a couple quick other updates. The marketing coordinator is working hard on a bus tour of Urbana for realtors and developers and contractors, partnering with UBA, the library, like, all the agencies are involved, so we're hoping to help Urbana put its best foot forward. Market at the Square Director Natalie Kenny-Marcas hosted, in partnership with the Illinois Stewardship Alliance, a Champagne-Urbana chef-to-farmer mixer. It was on March 31 at Cafeteria and Company, and there were over 40 farmers and chefs in attendance who compared notes on produce that needed to be grown and maybe cut a few deals. I'm sure the results will be delicious. The Boneyard Arts Festival is upon us, starts on Thursday. I'm gonna pass around a little postcard, if you haven't seen it yet. And the Urbana Arts Grants Process for 2014 is now complete. $47,500 in grant funding was issued to 32 artist groups and individuals. There was an award ceremony held last week to honor the recipients. And lastly, the Urbana Business Association announced that they'll be hosting, they're gonna try out business district merchant meetings, and they're gonna pilot that in downtown Urbana, trying to get business owners and property owners together on a more regular basis to discuss whatever issues they see fit to advance business and activity in, in their respective business districts, but again, starting in downtown Urbana. And lastly, the Urbana Restaurant Week was a big success, there's some survey responses and quotes from the restaurants that participated in the report that you can look at. Any questions?
There was a huge opening of Burkeys.
Oh, I apologize for leaving that out, yeah.
You wanna talk about that?
Burkeys Farm Store had a, yeah, a huge opening, it's a huge facility, and there were a lot of people present, the Chamber of Commerce was there to hold out the ribbon, and, and the mayor was there to say a few remarks, they took a tour, they had a, a very large... They had a very large business expo there, so there was a lot of excitement about that.
There was a huge crowd there, and they're also a very socially responsible local business. They contribute to the food bank. So that was a very nice thing, too, that they participate in the community. Dennis?
Yeah. There was one other item which actually, Brandon, you just reminded me of, and that as part of the Boneyard Festival events that are going to happen in Urbana, we do have scheduled the dedication of two plaques for the Joseph W. Royer Arts and Architectural District. One of them has been up for a little while in front of the Urbana Landmark Hotel, and that has never been dedicated, so we're going to be dedicating it at 5:00 on this Saturday as part of the Boneyard. And we're also going to be walking across the street to the front of the library and dedicating a plaque for the Samuel T. Bucy Memorial Library Entrance, which is the Royer-designed entrance of the Urbana Free Library. So within 20 minutes, you can come over to see the dedication of two, I won't call them historic, I'll call them architectural plaques. And then if you wish, you can retreat to the lower level of the hotel and enjoy meeting internationally known Chinese artists who's visiting the community. And we'll be at the Wine and View Event. It's part of the Sister City Program. We've invited Mr. Liu Zhonggong to come down from an exhibit that he's currently holding in downtown Chicago. He's going to come down and actually speak at our conference in the afternoon session. He's going to do a slideshow of his work. And if you'd like to meet him without having to actually register as part of the program, come down at 6:00 to the lower level of the hotel and greet him during the Wine and View Networking Event. So that's another part of the Boneyard. Arts are all around us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? Libby Tyler?
It really is a busy time. Yesterday, I attended the PACA Annual Awards Preservation and Conservation Association, and the organization recognized two individuals for a lifetime achievement, Robert Myers and Rebecca Byrd. And Robert was there and said some kind words about his work with Urbana, and this is for all their work promoting historic preservation in the community. We also had two commissioners who were awarded at that ceremony. Gina Paluso with Historic Preservation Commission for Preservation Project at her home on Vine Street, and Danny Otto, who's on her Plant Commission, who was given an award for his work on a property on McCullough. This week is also Money Smart Week with a lot of classes throughout the community. So we attended the kickoff on Friday, and I've got some of the brochures with the classes here, and there's more up front. Let's see. Thursday, I'm going up to Rockford to talk about infill development to the Illinois State Section of the American Planning Association. And so many of the things that we hear each month in the Economic Development Report are things that we can share with other communities on revitalizing their downtowns. And finally, before we do our next report, the market is, will actually be starting May 3rd, so before you know it, it'll be here. Questions?
Eric?
So I'm reminded that I saw in the newspaper, and might be appropriate to mention in the context of, you know, your report, that Champaign-Urbana is the fifth most compact city in the United States. And all of the others are much bigger than we are. And I think actually Urbana's more compact than Champaign, so I think that we're really the leader in that. So I think that's a, I think that's a tremendous testimony to the nature of, the overall nature of our planning. And of course, this is reflected in what's happening now downtown, which is really in the right direction in your, you know, work on infill and so forth. So I think, well, you know, I didn't do it, you guys did it, but we're all proud.
We all participated, and it was for our metro area, but I agree, I think Urbana's a big part of that. And we're actually the third most compact of the small cities. It's a new measure put together by Smart Growth America with a grant from the National Institutes for Health, and they looked at sprawl in a different way, using different measures. And I was invited to be at the release webinar, so I got to speak to probably 1,000 different people on the phone about the measure and what it means for our community. So congratulations, everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much. Diane?
I just wanted to ask about the report on the failure-to-comply tickets. And it was very wonderful to see that there were no failure-to-comply tickets issued since January, which means, I'm assuming, that the strategy we adopted seems to be working? Or we don't have any inspectors to inspect it? I'm hoping it's the former.
It seems to be a deterrent. I do have the number of violations, I think it was 263 in that time period. I'm trying to get the number of properties that were cleared. So, you know, the stiffer fines seem, really do seem to be a deterrent. I think that we're due to provide a more complete report to the council this month, though.
So later on? Okay, great. Thanks.
Mike?
I'd like to give a brief update on municipal electric aggregation. You recall, last September, the mayor signed a two-year contract with Home Field Energy. That starts July 1st. The rate was 4.74 cents per kilowatt hour. Opt-out letters to city residents will be going out April 15th. Residents, if they want to stay in the city's program, which I would strongly recommend because the price is great again, they just, you can recycle the letter and throw it away. You don't have to do anything. If you want out of the city's program, you need to return the letter. I have some information on rates. I was talking with Tom Ley from Good Energy, our consultant on aggregation, and electricity prices have continued to rise since we signed that contract. He was saying that any price we get now would be well over $0.05, and our price was 4.74 cents. I went and looked on a couple websites for what individuals could sign up, and I saw a two-year, two-year contract was 5.85 cents with one company and 6.15 cents for an 18-month contract with another company. So we are in good stead for the next two years to have very, very competitive electric prices for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to new business, discussion of digital billboards. I told you I would look and see where we were on this, and I think it was last October. So the problem in bringing it up for a full-blown discussion right now is that we really don't have the staff. So I've asked that we maybe bring it up in the fall. Put it on the goals, and then bring it up for discussion in the fall, because we don't have the planner in place at this point. So go ahead, Eric.
So I'm, you know, and you and I talked, and I'm, I understand the personnel crunch, and, you know, preparing an ordinance is not as easy as it looks and so forth. I anticipate, I mean, I did a lot of research on the issue before I, you know, kind of decided where I was standing on it. And I don't expect, I mean, I never want to say that I'm set in stone, but, you know, probably, probably I'm going to be where I was roughly with respect to the kinds of conditions that I would, you know, support the digital billboards. So I, and I do believe that there is some economic cost to delay, so I also understand your personnel crunch. So I guess I, I'm agreeable to, you know, postponing it for a little while until you get your planner in place, but I would urge, you know, as, to move as expeditiously as possible once that, once your personnel situation is settled.
Bill?
I guess just to follow up on the question of personnel, I do think it's a zoning issue that's going to require work and someone with knowledge and specific knowledge in zoning. I know the planner, both Planning 1 and Planning 2 positions were advertised in mid-December with closing date in mid-January, and now it's been three months since then. It seems like if I was out looking for a planning job and I'm applied in late December, I would probably pick a pretty good job. If I was a top candidate, I wouldn't wait four months to make a decision. So I'm worried that by that delay, we're missing some really good people. So I was just wondering if there's anything that you need from us as a council to help move the process along? Do we need to allocate more resources to a search process? I mean, this wasn't a national search, it was a, you know, Planning 1 positions.
The one on the digital billboards was the senior planner, Robert Myers, and I think we are poised to hire in those positions. Do you want to comment on that, Libby?
I might be more frustrated than anyone, but, you know, it really takes four to six months to hire with our process, with the advertising and civil service. And we've had several positions open, so it has taken a long time, and we've hit some bumps with the Planner 1 in particular, but we have some excellent candidates, and we're hoping very soon that we can, my hope would be to fill all three positions, but we should have hopefully some good news very soon for you. And then we'll work on the next ones coming up, so.
Is there any way to streamline that so that we don't have a three-month gap between the time we close a position and the time we hire somebody?
I would love that.
Charlie?
If anything, maybe after we get through the budget and start in our goals, maybe we want to look at the personnel process because it is a long, tedious one. Having been involved in the search for the Information Technology Director, we go through a lot of, a lot of paper, a lot of paperwork, and a lot of steps to, and in that process, you end up losing people because they take other jobs. And that has happened in this, this search that's happened in each of the searches that we've been involved in, that I, that I know of recently. You know, the fastest ones are when we, when we hire somebody from within, within the department. Even those take a while, so.
Anyone else? Diane?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Charlie, and in fact, it was one of the goals that I think I added, was periodically review, update employee policies and practices to ensure optimal working conditions, effective public service, and it goes along with some of the other policies that we want to be looking at very soon. So back to the digital billboards, can we put a goal of starting this discussion in September? The fall is a long stretch of time, so can we set it September?
Well, that's, you know, that's what I was suggesting, was that we do it in the fall, because right now, we're kind of bogged down in this whole budget stuff.
Well, then let's just define fall as September.
That's fine.
Okay. Or sooner.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I, I think now's as good a time as any. I'm not necessarily supportive of delay. I think I would be more than willing to donate some time. I, you know, we can just work with the industry. We can start frankly with our sister city, who has an effective ordinance on the book, on the books. We're not reinventing the wheel here. The company is operating in Champaign, so we have a really good place to start with an ordinance from Champaign. I'm not saying we have to copy it, but it does make some sense to operate under a similar ordinance. And I'm not sure, maybe somebody can educate me on the very difficult nuances of zoning that are going on here, but, but the company that we're talking about here that owns the billboards in town is talking about using existing billboards and converting them. So how much difficulty in zoning can there be on upgrading an existing location?
So you're just talking about converting all the existing ones to digital?
That's not what their proposal was at all. Their proposal was to convert a few and then actually to reduce their inventory in Urbana.
Okay. I don't think that's what happened in Champaign. I think they're doing like one, one-for-one. But anyway, we will certainly look at Champaign's ordinance.
I think that has to do with going forward, what could be approved and what would have to be eliminated. But, I mean, we could, I think we could easily strike a deal without having to belabor this or delay it to September.
Well, I'm sure that we could, but there seems to be some people that, you know, want to take a longer look at it. So we have a history, and, you know, that's, that's part of the problem.
Well, it's indeed unfortunate.
But we mostly want to make sure we do it right and not just copy Champaign.
It's indeed unfortunate. The history is clouding things here, in my humble opinion, because I don't think the company we're dealing with right now has the history with Urbana. It is a company they acquired in the past that had the history with Urbana. And so I would hope that everyone would give an earnest look to this, because as I have indicated before, I'm a small business owner. I am, right now, allocating some of my advertising resources to billboards in Champaign and not in Urbana. I wish that I could in Urbana, and I think a lot of small businesses in this community would benefit from being able to be one of many in rotation on a billboard for an economical price. Like I said, it's, it's an equalizer for small business, and any delay in that is denying small business that access.
Dennis?
Yeah. So I do appreciate having a little more time to look into the issue. I've had a couple of graduate students who were interested in doing some research, and of course, I realize that that's not exactly the, maybe the marker or the level of discovery that has to take place concerning zoning practice in the city. But giving a couple of months will allow a wider range of discovery to take place, and be happy to be bringing this topic back up in the fall.
Anyone else? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.